Helped us with this event also organizer Steve Sanson from the US Marines, sound engineer Matt Fox, US Army. Moderator Stephen Stubbs will be taking over for me after this session. He is here with us as well. I saw him. He's probably powdering his nose right now. And we have at the door Rhonda Gibson. And earlier we had George Shahad. I got it right the first time, George, sorry. He gave our invocation. He will be handling the camera duties this afternoon. So, please make your way up to the, I guess, stage podium, whichever you'd like to call it. In three minutes we will be starting. Just to go over some, I guess, rules that we have to have or that we go over. The candidates will be given 30 seconds to give a brief statement introduction on who they are. And we do have a timekeeper. Jason over here will be keeping time for the introduction and for the questions. Once he gives you time, that is it. I will cut you off. And I'm not afraid to cut you off. You can ask our friends here. All morning I've been doing it. So I will cut you off. It is no disrespect to you. It's just because we're on a time constraint. Questions will be coming from the panel. They will have your question. They can direct it to all three of you. They can direct it to individuals. And your minute will start then. If you need a rebuttal, trust me, I will know the rebuttal is needed and I will definitely let you answer. So don't worry about that. I'll definitely give you the time and the fair time that you need. So, we are going to... And oh, one more quick note that I want to go ahead and mention. You see our members of the panel here. There is one member, Richard Churchill, former North Las Vegas city councilman, who is abstaining from the North Las Vegas mayor race and the North Las Vegas Ward III, which is this election. He will not be participating in the questions for this particular panel. So I just wanted to make that clear. We have two minutes to spare. I'm glad everybody is on time. We're just gonna hang out because I want to get started right on time. And then we'll get started. Yes, sir?
Introduce the panelists.
Oh, I'm gonna introduce you. You're right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We have fragile egos.
You do. I apologize. You're absolutely right.
I was gonna suggest he sings the song.
Yes. Travis Barrick is an attorney. He is with us this afternoon. He's also helped us with the audio this morning and this afternoon.
And he has a fragile ego.
And he has a fragile ego. Obviously, you just heard me mention Mr. Churchill. Richard Churchill, former North Las Vegas city councilman, is with us as well. Melody Howard, she is with Veterans in Politics Nevada chapter. And she's abstaining from Las Vegas Ward II. Rob Lowers with us as well, US Army. Forrest Darby, I know he was with us this morning. I'm not sure if he's with us still. He's with us as well, was with us, US Army. And we have Karen Stillman, Veterans in Politics International Auxiliary Director. Mr. George Assad, former Las Vegas municipal court judge to my left, thank him. And part of the Brooks Brothers, we have Jason Brooks from the US Marines. He's also the timekeeper. And the other brother, Ra... No, not Robert. That would be Byron Brooks, US Army. We were talking about shooting and all this and got mixed up on that. Sorry about that. And of course, Andre Haynes is with us. So we... That is the panel. There's Mr. Darby. He asks tough questions, heads up. Just kidding. Just kidding. Now, they're all pretty fair. All right, we're one minute away, so I'm not gonna be able to sing, so I apologize. And I want to acknowledge this young lady at the very back over there. I'm not quite sure what group she's with, but she's been here with us all morning. That's you.
Yep.
I know you're here. I'm not quite sure what your name is, but thanks for being with us. I know you're handing out some pamphlets and some useful information, so I want to acknowledge you. All right, it is 1:30, so let's go ahead and start. What we've been doing is starting with the incumbent candidate that starts with the 30 seconds and then we'll just go down the road. So Councilwoman Wood, please go ahead and have your 30 seconds. Jason will be keeping time.
Aye.
There you go.
Hello, I'm Councilwoman Anita Wood. I have been a city councilperson for the city of North Las Vegas for the past four years. I've worked very hard during tough economic times to make sure that our city remains afloat. I've worked very hard to get equal representation and equity for the city of North Las Vegas. We've done a pretty good job now, but during the next four years, absolutely critical that we continue this fight. And that's why I'm asking for support for my reelection. Thank you.
That was the Councilwoman Anita Wood. Also joining her on stage is Tony Gales and Janice Redondo. We'll go ahead and start with Tony.
My name is Tony Gales. I'm glad to be here. I've lived in Nevada since 1996. I've lived in North Las Vegas.
Do you hold your mic up to your mouth, please?
My name is Tony Gales. I'm glad to be here. I've lived in North Las Vegas since 2004. I have a family, a beautiful family. My wife Josie works for Metro. My two daughters, Taylor and Delia. I work for Clark County School District. I'm a business owner and I'm glad to be here.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gales. And now we have Janice Redondo.
Janice Redondo, thank you for having me. Came to Las Vegas in 1993 with Blockbuster Video where I worked for 10 years. And then immediately after that, had a business in North Las Vegas for a short time and then got involved in politics. I've worked for the county commission for the last eight years. I can do this job. I can do it well and I have a duty. I feel like I have a duty to do it, so that's why I'm here today. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much. So I'm gonna go ahead and start, ladies first. Melody, are you ready or are we gonna start with Karen?
Start with Karen.
All right. Karen, you get the first question. And you can, of course, direct it to who you wish or all three.
Then you can all nap after this. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. I know how difficult this is and it's... We're honored that you would choose to present yourself to public with us. So I want to start with Janice. Can you tell us about your connection to County Commissioner Tom Collins and explain to us why he's taken such an interest in your candidacy?
Well, I can't speak for Tom, but I can tell you that I've worked for the county commission office for almost eight years. I worked three and a half years with Commissioner Chip Maxfield, who decided to retire when Larry Brown joined the race. And Commissioner Collins had a liaison spot open up. I worked for Kim Bush. She was my mentor. She helped me get my butt back to school. That's the only debt I have is for my school loans. And I interviewed for Commissioner Collins liaison and I was chosen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's the only question for... Okay. Anybody would like to answer that up there? No, you're good? All right, that was just for her. All right, that's easy. Mr. Assad?
Okay, thank you. Could you... Each of you please state your party affiliation, qualifications for the job, education and so forth. And my understanding is there is currently a gun ordinance in Las Vegas that says it is illegal to have a gun in your car in North Las Vegas. Would you be... What is your position on that? Would you be in favor of repealing such an ordinance?
Is this for all three, Mr. Assad?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody would like... Go ahead.
In order to... I'll start with your first question first. I have a degree from Occidental College. As far as my experience for this job, I started out as a neighborhood activist when we had a land use and zoning issue in my neighborhood. From there, I was actually appointed to the North Las Vegas Planning Commission, where I served for four years. After that, I've served on the North Las Vegas Citizens Advisory Committee, learning about community development block grants and North Las Vegas nonprofits. I also served on the North Las Vegas Utility Advisory Board, learning about our utilities and our water and sewer issues. I have served as president of Friends of the North Las Vegas Library District. I am a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy. I am also a member of the Citizens Police Academy Alumni North, which is its alumni association supporting our police. And I have served for the past four years on the city council. Yes, I understand that there are some issues regarding that ordinance. I'm always willing to look at the options.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to cut you off. Ms. Wood? All right, Mr. Gales?
Okay, my educational background. I hold an associate's degree in business management. I hold a bachelor's degree in anthropology and I also have a master's in business administration. I believe I'm definitely qualified to handle this position with the financial crisis that this city is facing, with the city charter and everything. I definitely believe that I'm the best candidate to represent the families in this community.
What was your second question?
What party are you on?
I'm also a Democrat.
And...
Yes, Democrat.
Would you repeal that gun order?
Yes, I would. I think it should be just like the counties. I own a gun myself. I have, like I said, I have two daughters at home I have to protect. So I would definitely like to see that changed.
Thank you, sir.
Janice Redondo, Democrat. I hold a degree from University of Phoenix for business management. And it's pretty ridiculous, the gun law in North Las Vegas. We have a beautiful, world-class Clark County shooting complex just butted right up against North Las Vegas. And you are in danger of being pulled over if you take your legal-owned firearm from your home to the Clark County shooting complex. So it's just pretty silly. Yes, I would.
Good. All right, are we ready for... We're gonna go on this side? You ready, Brooks? This Brooks? No, we're gonna go over here then. Melody, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Melody Howard has the next question.
I actually have two questions. One is for Councilwoman Wood and the other question is for Mr. Gales and Ms. Redondo. Ms. Wood, currently, North Las Vegas Chief Marshal earns $792,834 per year. The Assistant Fire Chief earns $452,516. Do you believe these salaries are reasonable and why or why not? And my question for the other two candidates is John Lee earlier discussed that there's a 55% vacant land in North Las Vegas. How would you propose to use that?
Just so we're clear, you guys got the question? If not, she can repeat for the final two candidates. But Ms. Wood, you're good with your question?
Yes, I think so. You're asking about the salaries. And I think everyone knows that this is not an issue exclusive to North Las Vegas, that salaries throughout the valley are higher perhaps than what they should be and certainly higher than what they should be in this economic times. The difficulty becomes, of course, the contracts aren't in place. And I know for North Las Vegas, our contracts do not come up for renewal until 2014 and 2015. This has been an ongoing issue with the city, particularly when you add raises that are promised per the contracts. And the city has done what it has had to do to keep those in control as much as possible. We, of course, declared a fiscal emergency. And we did leave the contract alone except for the part that talked about giving raises. And we kept people exactly where they were. And we did so because to not do so would have meant further layoffs in other areas, reduced services to our residents. And we simply could not have that for our residents.
All right, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Do you need them to repeat the question or do you remember it? All right, go ahead, Mr. Gales.
As far as the vacant land, as far as the vacant land in our city, the city of North Las Vegas, I want to be that person. I'm young, I'm motivated. I want to bring in a lot more businesses to the city of North Las Vegas. I saw on TV that Governor Sandoval said that he gets CEOs and businesses in his office daily for companies that want to move out here. I want to be that person that the council can call on and the mayor to go out and get these businesses. And like I said, I do have a master's in business administration. I think I'm the best candidate to try to bring these businesses to the city of North Las Vegas. And I'm also a small business owner myself. So that's why I think, that's what I would do.
Hey now, with age comes some knowledge and some maturity. I... The land that you're referring to, I believe, is out by Nellis Dunes, the Speedway. There's rail, there's I-15, there's 215. It is prime. North Las Vegas is the luckiest city in Southern Nevada to bring heavy industrial, light industrial, commercial industrial to grow, excuse me, that area out there. What we need is a destination and we need a city that's safe. That's gonna bring businesses out here and that's what we need to do. What I'll do as your councilwoman is wine and dine the businesses to get them out here. But the city's got to be safe and it's got to have a destination. It's got to have a wet and wild. It's got to have a Ferris wheel. It's got to have something for families that are gonna want to fill up the homes that are empty in North Las Vegas.
All right, Mr. Lowers?
My company is a small... I own a small business in North Las Vegas. We own and manage over 25 houses that we bought up in the recession and refurbished them. And frankly, I'm not really interested in doing any more business there because of the city and the way it's run and the way the problems that I've had. And I'll give you one example and I'd like your response as a city councilwoman specifically to a law. And I'd like to know if you think it's appropriate for the government, specifically city council, the city government, to be able to come on someone's private property and tell the property owner or tenant they can't park their car on their driveway if it's not registered, if it's not leaking oil, not in repair, but just sitting on a driveway and they can come on the property and give us an order to comply and make that tenant register their car. And I have an example specifically of a tenant who's an African-American woman. She was having a baby. She was laid off for a few months while she was doing that. Didn't have the money to pay her registration. She did the responsible thing. She parked her car. It's not leaking oil. It's not a disgusting mess. The city came and gave her an order to comply and was fineing her $130 a day for non-compliance. What businesses of the city to require people to come on their property to register a car that's sitting on private property not being driven?
Well, that certainly is a difficult situation. I mean, North Las Vegas certainly wants to keep up our neighborhoods. And that is whether it be in commercial or whether it be residential. That is absolutely critical to keeping property values up in North Las Vegas and allowing them to rise the way they should. Now, having said that, normally, we try to work with all of our residents, whether they, again, are commercial or residential. When we know they're in financial straits, we do try to work with them. And I do apologize if that is not the case with your tenant. Because we... She is not alone in having financial difficulties. We usually find some kind of middle ground where we work with that tenant as well as making sure that we're keeping the neighborhood safe, that we're keeping them looking nice. It's one of the reasons that I have championed for the foreclosure registry in North Las Vegas so that we can keep track of the foreclosures, make sure that the bank-owned properties are being maintained and kept up because of our...
We're not talking about that. This is a municipal code that requires people to register their cars even when they're parked in their own driveway.
I believe the time is up for that question. So if somebody else would like to take his question on the panel, we'll go that route.
I have a response from the others. Do you think that's an overreach by local government?
Yes, I think it is. Just like I believe that some of the HOAs in our city are ridiculous. I live in a gated community called Seville-Taj. And on my right side of the street, nobody can park. There's a red line that goes all the way down the street on the whole block. And I think that's terrible. When I have visitors that want to come over, there's nowhere to park and then there's a code for if you're parked out there after 10 or 11 o'clock at night, they tow your car. So yes, I definitely think that the city government needs to come up with a better code for that.
You know, there are... Rules are made to be broken, that's what they say. And the councilwoman told you that they're trying to keep the neighborhoods looking good. But Rob, I think that you said the car's not up on blocks, doesn't have busted windows, it's not leaking oil. So that's when you find out that a code or an ordinance needs to be tweaked and needs to be changed. And we only know when you bring stuff like that to our attention. But then you gotta follow through and the elected official has to bring the department, stakeholders to the table, and we gotta figure out how to fix it without creating loopholes for people to have the type of vehicles that we don't want sitting in the driveways. But anything can be fixed. You just gotta sit down and talk about it.
All right, Ms. Wood, you have 30 seconds. You said you wanted to rebut... I mean, do you...
Yeah, I'll be quick.
Okay.
I just want to make... Excuse me. I just want to make sure that we're very clear. When Mr. Gales is talking about a street that's redlined, I mean, and cars being towed and you're in a gated community, the red line is there because the street isn't large enough in order to allow streets to have parking on both sides and safe driving. And when it comes to towing, that's gonna be the HOA that does the towing. That's not the city. When it comes to what you're talking about, I mean, that's where we hope that residents will come and talk to the council people so that we can intervene and try to help. And that's something that I have made a major issue. It's one of the reasons I'm a full-time...
All right, thank you, Mary. But so now I get to interject. Have you reached out to city council members in North Las Vegas with this issue?
I met with the...
You want to get the mic?
Why are we going over this?
Because I feel that it's a follow-up question and I'm the moderator.
I actually...
As a journalist, as a journalist, I feel like if the councilwoman is saying that they should reach out to them, I want to hear if they have reached out to them and what their accountability is.
I have actually reached out to the city code enforcement agent in charge of that department. He said it's a municipal code. Too bad, so sad. And the real issue is this, that it does disproportionately affect minorities because they're living in homes that don't have garages, that are older, they're poor, and so it does affect them more. And that's a big issue too. But do people have a garage? They can put it in there. If they don't have garages, then they're being fined and cited.
All right, I just wanted to follow up because you mentioned they should go to the council members and he has obviously gone to code enforcement, so we'll move on. I adore you. You know that. All right, Mr. Darby?
Or at least another 10 seconds.
Hello. I'll keep this short. I want to thank all of you for coming. I want to thank all of you. So far, no personal shots at one another. We had that earlier. And I really appreciate that that's not happening. And I'm just gonna listen to your answers to all the other questions that are asked.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Travis Pericar. How are you all doing?
Hi, Travis.
All right, this... How many of you are familiar with the incident that happened with the Stray Cats Motorcycle Club in North Las Vegas? Raise your hand if you've heard of it.
Stray cats?
That would be a no.
That would be a no. You'd think I would, with cats.
Motorcycle club profiled by the police department in North Las Vegas improperly, against the law to profile. Had a private party on private property and were accosted by North Las Vegas Police Department. So the question, what is obviously for Ms. Wood, gonna be no. Were you briefed about that party in advance of the party?
That would be a definite no.
Thank you. So the question then becomes, what's the role of the city council in reining in overzealous police department? And making sure that they respect people's constitutional rights? What's your role in monitoring the behavior of the police department so that we don't have to sue? All three of you.
Okay. Well, I can tell you. I meet monthly with the police department where I do get briefings from them. I will follow up with them as to why I did not get a briefing on that issue. But I can tell you, our role is to be the mediator there. And that's where we really do, and I really do, count on residents to bring these issues up to me so that I can report them to the city manager who the police chief reports to, bring this issue to light, get it looked at and investigated, and then take whatever appropriate action that the city manager deems valid after a thorough investigation. And I will be more than happy to do that.
If I win city council, I plan on having a great relationship with the fire and police. And like I said, with the fire department, I definitely plan on being out there in the community, talking to the minorities and different groups in such an event like this. I'll definitely be involved.
Travis, I'm sorry to say that I haven't heard about that. And normally, some of those that are tried to keep under the carpet, so to speak, you end up finding out through the media or you find out through someone else. But I'm not exactly sure what the role of this particular city council is with their police department. I hope you don't sue. It's like, how many more people can sue North Las Vegas? But you've got to, you gotta use your voice. And if you have to go down to city hall, whatever you have to do to make it right so it doesn't happen to somebody else, sometimes that's a bigger issue. You know, if you know about that something's going wrong and you don't do something about it, you're sometimes as fault as the people that are doing something wrong.
Well, that brings up a follow-up question. There was a letter sent to all the members of the city council, so I'm suggesting that there's something porous going on. Do you have people, gatekeepers, that keep you from hearing things, not receiving letters, correspondence?
To be fair, let me go ahead and interject in that. When did this happen and when was that letter sent? So they can maybe have an idea of when this was around the timeframe, just to be fair to the panel.
Attorney, Mr. Stubbs.
Right here, leave.
I'm actually the attorney for the Stray Cats Motorcycle Club.
Okay, so can we just give them an idea of when that date was and then we'll move on?
It happened January 2012. I... We got 250 signed letters and a cover letter that was sent to each member of the city council, the mayor, the city manager, the chief of police. We did not receive even one answer or one phone call. That was sent in March 2012 and it was dropped off at the city hall. And unfortunately, we had to file suit and it has been filed.
So this happened, the early part, in 2012, from January through March.
But it brings back the bigger question. What's the role of city council in guaranteeing the civil rights of its own citizens?
Go ahead, Ms. Wood.
All I can tell you is I have not seen anything. And I will do an investigation, starting Monday morning, to find out what happened to those letters. I've never had something like this happen before, in all honesty. Do we have gatekeepers? No. Anyone who wants to get ahold of me through email, I answer my own email. I run my own schedule. I'm available by phone. So, you know, our role is to make sure that these kinds of things don't happen. And our role is to get as involved as we can be and to make sure that we are as fair to our residents as we can possibly be. And certainly, look at the economy and how that's affecting, which was the case in Mr. Lowers' situation. And to look at what the outstanding factors were in this instance as well. And that is something that we will get on top of.
I'm gonna extend this to Mr... The other two candidates. Do you want to reply? Let's say, what do you think the role would be for the city council member? If you want to answer that. You're good? Okay.
No, absolutely. I mean, the police department, just like any other department, you have to have briefings as a councilperson and talk about all of the issues. And a constant culture of training with customer service being the focus in every single department, whether it's code enforcement or the building department or police and fire. Customer service is what's going to keep people in that city. Without people in our city, we've got bigger problems than we have right now.
All right, we're good?
Thank you.
Mr. Stubbs, I was still working in the media then. Why didn't you contact me? I would've done something with that. Just kidding.
Sidebar, move the strike.
I'm kidding, sidebar. I'm messing with you. I'm messing with you. All right, all right. Any of the Brooks brothers ready? We have Jason, we have Byron. Who's gonna go first? We have Byron.
You know what? Just listening to some of the answers that have been given already regarding the straight questions that have been asked, it's really disappointing. It's disappointing that nobody at city council knew what was going on with this motorcycle club. I think it's disappointing that rather than maybe presenting something just upfront, like it's possible there are gatekeepers or hey, we have a few bad apples in the bunch. You know, I'll take a look at that. It's... Was almost like a denial, like there's really nothing going on here. There's nothing wrong. It just happens.
No, I did not say that.
No, no, I'm just letting you know my perception, the way that I'm reading it.
So is there... Are we gonna ask a question or are we going to bypass it? Are we gonna bypass it? Yes, we are.
Yeah, no, so... So here's my question, just to get off of that for a second. Okay, what I'd like to know from each of you is right now, North Las Vegas is really not any type of destination spot for even those who live in Las Vegas or Henderson. There's... We don't find reason to travel out to North Las Vegas. What I'd like to know is, as council members, what would you do to entice people who are local to travel out to the North Las Vegas area?
We could build a water treatment plant.
Yeah, that's a big destination. You know, we... I'm working on that, I can tell you, every single day. I am working with Senator Reed's office in order for passage of the Tulley Springs to have that declared a national monument under the National Park Service because with that will come a visitor center, a museum, a new type of tourism. Part of that legislation also includes 2,000 acres for UNLV to build a secondary campus, one that will be larger than what they have at Maryland Parkway. That would be wonderful. It is right across from the VA Hospital. They could have wonderful synergy with an amazing, world-renowned archaeological, paleontological program, a dig site right there in their own backyard. They could have an amazing medical program there with an internship and any other kind of synergy with the VA Hospital there. We are looking at what kind of businesses we need to bring in to support the Speedway, to support the VA Hospital, all of that. I mean, we are working on the I-11 and what role North Las Vegas will play on that. You know, so we are working on finding that destination spot.
All right, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Go ahead.
Okay, I served on the Parks and Recreation Board in North Las Vegas. And while I was on that board, I had a lot of different suggestions. My father was in the army for 20 years, so we lived on a lot of army bases. And our last one we stayed on was in Hawaii. I was a product of the community center. I was always in the community center. We came up with a skating rink outside that brought everybody across the base to this skating rink. And we all had a good time every weekend, kept kids out of trouble. Parents were out there. It was just a good community event. I brought that up to the Parks and Recreation Board and I thought that Craig Ranch project, the park would be a great opportunity to bring a big-sized community skating rink that would bring in students from all over. We could do advertising and different marketing ideas to all these different high schools across the valley and bring them all over here on Friday and Saturday nights. And I think that would be a great opportunity.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, I want to think big and I'm thinking big destination, but just let me tell you, and I hope I don't run out of time. City council just voted the other night on the modelers, the model airplane guys that have been out at Cool Airfield forever to restrict what they can fly and when they can fly. These guys go out of state and they have competitions. And it brings sometimes 20 people, but sometimes it brings 60 people. The wives don't go because they don't want to go to Colorado or they don't want to go to California. But they said, if you went to Vegas, we'd go to Vegas. Well, the city won't let them have competitions. So they have to go elsewhere, participate, but they're not able to invite the people here to Las Vegas. Now, that's just a small thing, but it helps all of Southern Nevada. If we can't fix the financial problems and fix them soon
I say we sell it. I don't, we need some money, so I'm not sure. There's, I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
All right, Jason Brooks, the other half of the Brooks brothers.
All right, the younger half.
You're supposed to say the better one.
I say younger, younger's better, we know that. So, all right, just so you know, everybody's talking about North Las Vegas. You know, I was born and raised here in Vegas, grew up around Pickles and Russell. Back when I grew up, we used to have horseback riding stables out there, you know, Daydream Ranch, Big Valley Riding Stables. Now, I'm a Green Valley guy. I never go to North Las Vegas, and I'm from here. And like everybody says, it's, there's no reason to go up there, go to Nellis Air Force Base...
That's not true.
To shop at the commissary. But I'm telling you what I personally feel, so it's true for me. So I'm just letting you know that you're absolutely right, something does need to happen for North Las Vegas to go. I'd actually like to do a follow-up question real quick from what Rob had brought up earlier, 'cause he's talking about someone who parks their car in their own driveway, you know, they're getting a ticket for it not being registered. My biggest pet peeve in the whole valley, it's not just North Las Vegas, is out-of-state plates that I see on cars that are, you know they're at jobs, they're working, they're picking up their kids from school all the time. Our source of revenue for the state is vehicle registration. We don't have the state tax, so we have higher vehicle registration, but they don't understand the state income tax doesn't, you know, apply to them for their jobs. So they move here from California, they move here from other states, and they complain that it's too high for us to register. What would you do instead of going onto someone's property who doesn't have their vehicle registered because of something happened? What about the out-of-state plates that are rampant throughout, especially in North Las Vegas?
Well, the difficulty that we have is you hit it right on the head. It's a state issue, and they have hampered what the cities can do. We cannot, as a city or for our police department, to drive by, see an out-of-state plate and be able to pull that car over and talk to them about that issue. Now, if they pull you over for something else, speeding, then yes, they can ask you about it and decide to cite you, but it has to be a secondary offense. And there, they've really hogtied our hands. I get emails from people all the time reporting to me that their neighbors have an out-of-state plate and the car's been sitting there for six to eight months to a year. I pass it on to the police department, but again, unless they go by and that car is doing something where they can pull them over for the first offense and then talk to them about the second, we cannot go out there and do, you know, and use that as a primary reason to go. And so we are working with the state legislature to see if we can get that altered, because believe me, there is nothing worse than that. And the other one that I get, and that's also very true, is the fact that we are stuck giving contracts to the lowest bidder, and many times, that results in us giving it to a company that brings in all these workers from Utah and Arizona and California and not for Nevada jobs.
All right, ma'am, thank you very much.
If you'd like to address the same question, please, what would you do to change it?
I agree with Anita, I think that's a state issue. I don't think that there's anything on the city council level that we could actually do to get these residents to change over their driver's license. We get a lot of people in the city that's here visiting, we get a lot of people here that's attending colleges here. When I came here from Memphis, Tennessee, I had a Tennessee plate because I had no clue that I would end up staying here. So I had no reason to change over my license plate, so...
I have a comment and a question I'd like to address on this issue.
Can I give her the chance to answer, and then we'll go to you? Can I owe you one?
Jason, I would have to get back to you on that, because I would tell you, if, especially if police know the vehicle and the vehicle has a job somewhere and has been here for years with Montana or Utah or Florida, whatever the plate is, you can't tell me that we can't ticket them. I would think North Las Vegas Metro can ticket someone. And you're right, we gotta look at, we gotta turn over every stone to get every dollar of revenue that we can in North Las Vegas.
Go ahead, you had it, go ahead.
I often hear seated officials and candidates make that statement that you made, that there's nothing that we can do, it's a state issue, or it's another entity's issue. But as a public servant, you're in a perfect position to be the first one to raise the flag and, you know, head the march that this is what we need to do. So what could you do as a city councilperson to address the state with that issue or any other issue? Or any other entity? To resolve some of the issues that we have?
Well, let me be clear. I did not say that there wasn't anything that we could do. What I said was, we are working with the state on getting legislation to change that. And when they came, when the city came to me this year and said, hey, we're looking for, what kind of bills do we wanna bring before the state legislature? That was one of the things that I brought forward. What I was told is that bill wasn't needed to come from the city of North Las Vegas because there are already those up at the legislature going to introduce that bill. And so we will be supporting that bill when it comes forward.
Thank you.
Any of you two can answer that, address that? She opened it, you both can...
There's always something we can do, I agree with you. I get in trouble all the time at my current job because I step over the lines and I bark at people and I, when something's wrong, and it's very simple. We could all look at ten different issues and it's right or it's wrong. And if it's wrong, we need to start to talk to each other to fix whatever it is that's wrong.
Sir, would you like to respond? You're good, all right. So I know Mr. Barrett would like to ask a question, but Ms. Howard listened well. You're good, all right, so I'm gonna go ahead and, go ahead.
Who do you endorse for mayor?
And go.
I have my hands full with my own race. I'm going to research that, I promise you, 'cause obviously I vote as we get closer. But I just, I can't intelligently answer that right now. I got, and there are things to see in North Las Vegas. I have an animal rescue that you're welcome to come visit anytime. I have people from all over the valley and from out of state come to visit the animals, but I just can't answer that right now.
I don't know Mayor Buck personally. I spoke to John Lee on occasion. He seems very optimistic about working with different businesses to bring them here, so they have, I really can't, I really don't wanna endorse either one of them.
Well, I'm in that difficult situation that I'll be working with one or the other, whoever wins that seat. And as a result, I'm staying neutral in that, I'm staying out of that race. I agree with Ms. Redondo that I've got my hands full with this race, and I wanna make sure that I'm capable of working with whoever wins that election.
All right, so I have a question as a moderator now. Hopefully, you guys will bear with me. Obviously, I'm Hispanic. I covered a lot of minority issues when I was working at Channel Eight. North Las Vegas has a huge Hispanic population. We saw this last election, they came out and drove to vote. I've often heard that they try to open up businesses. We have Garden of Ness Meat Market, we have Mariana, stores like that, they try to open up in North Las Vegas. They can never get where they want because no one gives them the attention that they desire because of the language barrier. Yes, we are in the United States, and I understand that English is a predominant language. How do you intend to work with a minority group? Not just Hispanics, but other minority groups when it comes to opening up business? And I'm gonna start with you, because we started that in before, so I'd like to start with you and go this way.
Thank you, I appreciate the question. And absolutely, the Hispanic vote, every vote, is gonna be very important. This is really an important municipal race. We have to have folks that can speak to folks regardless of what the language is, and we have to help them. Businesses, if we have to do some free tax days, whatever we gotta do, we've got to get businesses into North Las Vegas. And unless the folks that you're talking about come to the council and ask for help, the frontline staff, I'm curious with them on a daily basis. Now, I get that there's not a lot of them, and so, and the other bad thing, we let the young people go when you laid off a bunch of staff, so the older folks that don't really wanna work came down to the front-level staff and they're just in a bad mood. But it's our, it's our job as your elected official to make sure that they are helping and not hindering, and I hear that it sounds like that's what's been happening. I apologize.
Well, as I said, as I stated earlier, I do have an MBA. I'm Asian and black, I'm Korean, my wife is Hispanic. I would definitely reach out to these different groups to try to figure out what we can do to try to help them. Some of the business owners that I've spoken to, they said it's a lot of, it's just, we need like a one-stop shop in the city of North Las Vegas where we can try to bring these businesses here faster and easier, and that's what I plan on doing in this community. I have my wife with me, so if I meet any of these Hispanics out there, I can't speak the language, I would definitely have my wife talk to them and try to do what we can to bring them here and to get these businesses open.
Well, one of the things with the new City Hall is it gives us that one-stop shop, first of all. Second of all, what we need to do is make sure that we're doing the appropriate reach-out. And one of the things that I'm pushing for and working on right now is getting what we call a community development corporation going. It is a nonprofit that unites banks, businesses, the chamber, all of those entities together so that we can start working better with businesses in North Las Vegas, opening up capital, because we'll have the banks involved, the chamber, all of that, so that we can encourage businesses to come to North Las Vegas, make sure that we reach out to Hispanic organizations and all of that, so that we are growing those businesses better, that we have the assets and the resources that we need to do that, and getting the community involved. And right now, the Metro Chamber, which includes the North Las Vegas Chamber, is helping me take that on and spearhead that, and we're moving forward with that. And I think that will hopefully alleviate some of the concerns that you have.
All right, thank you. I'll be back on news in ten months, and I'll be following up, just so you guys know. Anybody else have any questions on this panel?
I have many questions.
We have, well, yeah, we got ten minutes, and I wanna give them a chance to say their...
You have ten minutes?
Oh, I thought it was next one. Yeah, five minutes, you're right, we're in at two-ten. All right, so two questions, one here. We'll start with you, and then we'll keep it brief, and then we'll end, because we gotta give them a chance to say goodbye.
Thank you, Chris. Real quick...
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. Hello? Thank you. Very quickly, yes or no, or just a short little answer. Obviously, North Las Vegas has some serious financial problems. Do we have a spending problem? Or do we have a revenue problem? Do we need to raise taxes? Or do we need to cut spending? How does that relate to union contracts? Rob asked about, Melanie did, about four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for a fire chief, assistant fire chief, fire marshal, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand? I mean, how do I get a job like that? And then, what about consolidation and school vouchers? How do you feel each of you about those?
Let's break down these questions, 'cause that's four or five questions there, and we have five minutes. So which question do you wanna go?
Spending problem versus revenue problem.
Go ahead, yes.
It is not a spending problem, it is very much a revenue problem. The city of North Las Vegas has not been receiving its fair share of seat tax dollars and revenue for a very, very long time. And as a result, and I think a lot of it has to do with the large minority population that we have in North Las Vegas, it has been very, very difficult for North Las Vegas.
But what about the union contracts?
Oh, they're, I was answering the first part. Remember, it was like a three-part, at least a three-part question there. You know, the union contracts, unfortunately, there's not a whole lot we can do until they come up for negotiation. And right now, the problem with the city is, when we go in asking for concessions right now, that's exactly it. We're not going in on a level playing field. We're asking for concessions, we're asking them to open up that contract. What's going to have to happen is in 2014 and 2015, when these contracts expire and when we are going in to renew, or no longer renew, but negotiate new contracts, is when we are going to have to take the steps to make sure that we do the things that have never been done before. Escape clauses, so that...
All right, ma'am, let's move on, because this is a tough question. It is, to be fair, there's multiple questions there, and if you wanna tackle, which one did you, was it the revenue versus...
Spending or revenue?
General philosophy.
This city is in trouble. We are in trouble. I want everybody to know this city is in trouble financially because of we're spending too much money. We had, we didn't even leave that City Hall, we could've stayed where we were at. If I went in City Council, I would not have a problem working on our old building, it would not, it wouldn't make me none. We have a spending problem, and I think once we figure that out, we need to work with other, we need to work with the state officials to figure out what their recommendations are going forward. That's the first thing we need to do. We need to figure out where we're spending this money. I don't know how she can sit here and say that we don't have a spending problem. We have a spending problem. We don't have revenue coming in either. That's the problem.
Yes and yes. There's a spending problem, there's a revenue problem. And everybody, unfortunately, I think, knows that North Las Vegas is in some pretty financial